All right, I will call the City of Dunsmere regular, uh, special meeting, uh, on, what is the day?
Fifteen.
June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, to order, we'll stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we'll do, we'll call Councilmember Peisler.
Here.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Council, uh, Councilmember Plarno.
Here.
And Councilmember Brian is absent, or excused, I should say, and so we will move into public comment for our closed session items. We have two items tonight, which is both are real property negotiation, and so we will open public comment and note that there are no members of the public in the audience or on Zoom. So we will now call, uh, close public comment on the closed session items and enter into.
Yes.
Are we unmuted as well?
Yes.
All right, I will call us back into open session and report that on both items, direction was given to staff. Uh, and now we will recess until, when do you wanna, uh, you wanna recess until six P M? For the, the other regular items of the session? Any dissent to that? All right, we are recessed.
Is it recording on? Meeting for July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, back into session at six oh two P M. Um, for the record, I am going to say that unfortunately Mary Kayzie had to run for an external matter and she's hoping to be able to be back during the meeting. Um, but if she does come back, if she does, I will be, uh, running the meeting here on. Uh, during closed session, there were two items discussed. Um, both conferences with real property negotiations on two different lots inside the city, uh, and on both of those items, direction was given, uh, to the city manager. That sufficient for, okay? All right, and with that, we will move on to item number five, with special presentations and announcements, um, today from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, with their update on the Union Pacific project.
Welcome back.
Good afternoon.
I think, check the switch, did you switch up?
Always a mess.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Or any switching.
Hi. Okay. Um, I'm Anna Bercolder with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife Office of Sport Prevention and Response. Um, here today to give you an update on the Union Pacific Railroad remediation project, obviously down in the rail yard. Um, also here is Eric Laughlin, he's our Public Information Officer, and I'm the Liaison Officer, um, for this particular project. Um, and Blake is bringing up a presentation for me. Okay, of course it is, it's all good. Um, we're starting to kind of kick off a lot more work again after winter season and all the, um, inclement weather. So we're finally getting, getting back to work, so we can see that, I'm sorry. Um, and I didn't print out a copy for myself, so I'm gonna be kind of, that's when we get my presentation going. Um, I guess I can start out while that's coming up, um, so. So, as you probably know, um, there were, yeah, there we go. Um, next slide. Okay, so work activities for twenty twenty-three. Um, there was the demolition of the two remaining buildings in the rail yard, one was the old city, um, Public Works Building, as well as a Union Pacific Building, those buildings are demolished, that's completed. Um, and then they're, they're following up with finishing up some of the, you know, the concrete footprint removal. Um, once the building pads are gone, they're gonna go through and do some, um, soil samples to pre-characterize, um, the hazardous, any hazardous contaminants that are, that are in the soil, so those are just some of the pictures of the, uh, the building demolition. Um, next slide, please. Um, and you may have noticed that there's a new modular building right along Sacramento, uh, Street in the rail yard, and that will serve as a building for the Union Pacific Railroad employees. Um, and I understand that will be a permanent building for them going forward. Okay, so excavation, so we'd, some excavation work was done last year, um, before the rain and the snow started, but we're gonna kind of get back to that. Dry excavation, which means it's above the water table, is set to begin next week, about the middle of next week. Um, and these dates I tell you again are subject to change depending on what's going on. Um, wet excavation, which means we start getting into the water table, get into a lot more of the contaminants, that is scheduled to begin sometime in July. Um, oh, sorry, go back Blake, sorry. Excavation depths vary throughout the site, um, but generally they're gonna go down about twenty-five feet, in some places they'll go down to bedrock, so they can clean up, um, those contaminants. Um, there's a stockpile pad constructed in the South Rail Yard that can accept a lot of the, um, the excavated soil, and then the material that's, you know, from the wet excavation will be allowed to dry, go through a drying process before it is shipped out, um, for disposal. Yes.
Public, what's gonna be going on, trucks coming in, trucks going out?
Absolutely, I actually have that in here. Yep, you got it. Okay, next slide, thanks Blake. Okay, so, and then finally, so after all the excavation work is done, we're gonna be in clean fill, um, from local sources, either the Mount Shasta area, the Redding area, um, to fill in again all the excavated areas. Then they're gonna go through and they're gonna restore the shoreline. So this is some work, this is a picture of the work that was done in twenty twenty-one, which is the north part of the rail yard. So we're gonna restore kind of the edges of the shoreline, um, and then put in riparian habitat, and that sort of thing. Um, many of you know there's a, there's a cement wall between the river and the rail yard, so that's all gonna come out. And again, um, create a riparian, um, area, oops, I'm sorry, yep, yep. Um, and hopefully this will provide more, obviously more habitat for, um, upland species, but hopefully some more fish habitat, you know, on higher flows and, and that sort of thing. Um, there was still discussion going on, there's a roundhouse wall that was out in front of where the, um, Public Works Building is going. Um, there's still discussion on whether they're gonna take that out, leave it in, that kind of thing, so, for whatever that's worth. Um, okay, next slide, please. Maybe? I think we get into the traffic, there it is. Okay, so traffic plan for twenty twenty-three. So when I was here last year, we talked about the traffic plan for last year, it's gonna be basically the same, and I'm gonna show you some maps here in a minute. Um, so the, the traffic activities are gonna increase in town with trucks, um, coming in and out, um, vendor deliveries, mobilization and demo of equipment. Um, again, transportation of materials into the South Rail Yard, so from North to South Rail Yard, um, and then just general truck site use. Um, so the next slide has a map. Um, don't know how well all of you can see that, but generally from northbound, they're gonna use exit seven thirty to Dunsmere Avenue, and then come down, woo! Um, sorry. Got busy there. And then use Dunsmere Avenue down to Sacramento Avenue down to the rail yard. And next slide. So that's, that's the main impact to the city, obviously. Um, so seven thirty, you know, exit seven thirty either direction, and then from the North Rail Yard, which is here, which is where all the excavation work is going on, to the South Rail Yard, um, they're gonna get back on the Sacramento Avenue, you know, jump over to Share Avenue, sure, thank you, Avenue, and then down to the South Rail Yard, and then the last picture I think shows that, which is. That would be wonderful if I, if I had that in front of me, I apologize. I don't think, I didn't bring the traffic plan with me, I apologize. Yeah, yeah, I mean, once, especially once the clean fill starts coming in, you know, that's gonna be a lot of truck traffic. Um, 'cause some of the excavated material will be loaded onto rail cars, so this is just gonna be train traffic. Um, but some of the material will be loaded onto trucks and shipped down to Kettelman, Kettelman City by Fresno, yes.
Okay, so, some of the dirty, I won't say contaminated, dirty soil.
Yes.
That goes to the South Rail, Rail Yard, it sits there in a remediation process until it is able to be shipped out. How long is that, how long does that dirty dirt sit there for?
Well, no, it's gonna depend on the temperatures, I know, I understand, and I can ask that question. Um, it's gonna depend on the temperature, the ambient temperature, your wind, 'cause that's gonna help dry out the soil. They just need, it just needs to have, you know, the evaporation process, the drying out process, that's a great question.
Because it's still close to neighbors.
Understood, understood, yes.
You know, people develop first, so we will.
Great question, okay, I, I'm happy to ask.
Uh, too many cars.
It's okay? Say again? Yeah, I mean, they're giving, they're asphalting it, it's, it's all is all line, it cannot, it cannot soak back into the ground, absolutely. Uh, I wanna see if there's anything else, any other notes I had here for you? Um, no, okay. Any more questions? And that's just. Yes. Great.
Um, first one's gonna be fairly similar to Dave's question here, those piles, if they're drying out on windy days.
Okay.
Is there any danger of that dust blowing into residential areas, and so what kind of danger would that potentially pose?
Okay, I'm gonna ask that question.
That's right, we have to understand that you don't have all of those answers.
Yeah, absolutely, happy, happy to do that.
Ask loud.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have their ear, I can ask loud, I, I promise. You got it.
Obviously, that traffic is to be the biggest impact on the citizens, it's not what's going on at the office.
But where are tearing the roads?
Well, they're working on it in the evening.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think Union Pacific's working closely with Dustin like weekly, so, and I remember last year that was a big topic that the city was really engaged in that, in this conversation, so I'll assume that Dustin's involved.
I believe the, the estimate originally was around a hundred, potentially a hundred trucks, and that's not all inbound, but that could be yard to yard per day, but there, we also remember their timeline has been delayed to starting, and so they had originally intended in April, and we're now almost to July, and they're supposed to be done by December, so.
They bumped it up.
So they've half, will be ramping up faster, and so we'll have more.
But to be clear to the public, the idea is that there's a chance that we realize that Dunsmere Avenue and Sacramento Avenue, and Share Avenue are gonna be impacted going forward, and just understand that, appreciate it, it's for a good thing, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Was it high five three when everybody just needs to bide their time?
There is one other thing I have to check in.
Sure.
On the gap of the chamber, we recognize that you're gonna have all kinds of drivers, workers, everything, so the chamber isn't working on
Yes.
a little bit of this, so that they can understand all the process that will happen in what time, so appreciate the support and the change.
That's not to beat the mixer, that she developed maybe a Q R code that we could. Excellent. Yeah, wonderful, yes, I think that's a fabulous idea, so I'm looking forward to having that, and we can I'll have you take that to whoever. Yeah, so that's just a picture I took in early May, so that's just down on the rail yard. Um, so this is the old Union Pacific, it was almost an old building, but it's now gone. So this is just what it looked like after the, after last year's excavation, they covered it, um, to protect it from the winter. So there's just covering in rock to protect it until they can start work again. So, I'm sorry, what was? Oh, I don't know. I don't know.
Given that generally is not obvious, if I've seen this time of year, but you can bring up straight public comment and they can answer it then, um.
Let her finish her presentation.
Yes.
Good call, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I appreciate that, I'm, I'm good, I'm done, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm gonna leave this on.
Thank you. Uh, I think there's a question during the public's comments, um, during your public comment time, and as long as you're finding staying for public comment.
Yeah.
All I need to answer is questions that come up during public comment. Then I get all.
Open up the public comment for this presentation.
Open it up the public comment for this presentation before we do a general public comment. So if you do have questions, um, please line up behind the podium, um, these questions are specifically in relation to this project with Fish and Wildlife, and after this section of public comment, we will open it up again to getting the help to comment. Um.
She should be, like, maybe here.
Yeah, I went over.
Come, come center stage. Okay.
I, I have a few questions on this project, uh, the first one is, did the city really permit, uh, a building so close to our historic district to be non-conforming? It's, uh, been stated over and over again, it's an ugly building. We've been told it's a temporary building, now we're being told it's a permanent building? You just said it was a permanent building, is that correct?
I asked you what submitted points meeting, they, they told me it was permanent. What, I don't know what the city has.
We don't worry about historic codes?
I didn't know about it till right now, so.
We have no authority of the railroad.
And it's also in an industrial zoned parcel, sorry.
So much fun, love to see the historic district clean. Um, the second one is, can I ask this question? Who, who is funding this project?
Union Pacific.
Union Pacific.
Union Pacific is funding the.
Completely, and they don't get any super fund money or anything, it's strictly on them?
I'm aware of.
Okay. Um, and the, the last question is, you said, and things such as that, three times? And so I would like to get something that actually tells me what the such and such is.
Can you, can you?
The riparian area, what it's gonna look like when it's finished, you said and such, and you said, I, I just, you can, uh, give it to, send it to an email, I'll give you an email address.
Okay.
Okay.
It should look like the picture that was up there. And I have.
Why, I, I don't know what and such is, it's not like we're allowed on the property, and that picture wasn't extremely telling, so I, I would like a little bit more, is that possible?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, here's a, here's a backseat for you, sir.
Peter, ours fifty-eight, fifty-nine Sacramento Avenue, and of course, I live across the street looking out over the project. Uh, obviously recreational fishing is hugely important to our community, will fish and game be stocking the upper sack, uh, this year and next, as they have? And on a vision and planning basis, is anyone looking five years down the road to making this a beautiful area? A sensitive interface between Union Pacific's operations, the pristine nation, nature of the upper sack, great recreational opportunities, this potentially could be a big, big boost to hanging on to our historical roots. I understand we're gonna keep the Amtrak Terminal. Wouldn't it be nice to make this one of the most attractive Amtrak terminals? Wouldn't it be nice to keep some real history in this area that's now vacated? What will the fishing access and the trail access be like? Uh, is Union Pacific gonna help us with that? Is it on the city? Can we work with the state? I, I do think in terms of hate the circumstances, but this could be a big boon for the economy and the environment of Northern California. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so I can probably address some of that. So in the discussions, uh, last fall, um, I worked really hard to with, uh, Union Pacific to ensure that we don't have another moss spray falls component to, uh, to ensure that twenty years from now, when all those trees are grown, we have that access to the pristine waters of the Sacramento, and, uh, in more of a passive fashion rather than any other, uh, way, similar to the up by River Avenue, where it's, you know, there's kind of a passive access there next to the water. Um, it's not designed for vehicles, it's just, you know, walk in, if you wanna fish, you can fish and those kind of things, but it still is private property, and so we must respect that. Um, and from a safety standpoint, um, I am trying to work with them, and I don't know where it ended up, but the thought process was to have a fence at the top of the, at the rail yard separating the mitigation efforts from the rail yard, so if somebody does get down there, then those two paths don't cross, keeping people safe and out of harm's way.
Uh, the thing I'm pointing out is, is that when we got the tour, the city council got the tour of the project the last year, that it was pointed out that they were considering turning some of that property down there into other, into some pleasant sort of space there. Um, it isn't, hasn't been talked any further than that, um, so we'll see what happens with that down the line.
Are there any other questions for members of the audience or people on Zoom? If you would like to ask a question over Zoom, um, please signify that by going to the bottom left and raising your hand.
So, um, down in the train yard several years ago, we planted some dogwoods, and they survived, a lot of them. And I would just like to be reassured that, um, with all of the things that are going on, that they will continue to be taken care of and not cut down or
Yeah.
scooped up or whatever. Do you know what I'm talking about, where I'm talking about?
And I'll clarify, those trees are on the edge of the, the parking lot and the fence, or the, the, uh. On this side. They're on this side of the fence on, um, Sacramento Avenue. I, I could probably answer that, currently there has been no discussion about any work happening on this side of the tracks outside the ADA, um, project for Amtrak.
Um.
So, yes.
So I'm asking this for Cindy because she couldn't be here, and she planted the first trees, and so what she noticed was that down by the new building, there's a bunch of webbed fencing and stuff, and you know, if they're hanging it on the dogwoods, they're not really you know, I just would like people to be mindful of what they can do to, okay, thank you, that's all.
All right, anyone else? See no one in the audience or on Zoom, uh, we'll close public comment for this item. Thank you very much for, um, coming today and, uh, presenting for us. Um, and with that.
You should, should he report back from closed session now?
Oh. I did, I did.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, cool. Must miss it.
And, um, with that, we'll move on to general public comment for the evening. Um, for the audience's reference, um, this is for any item pertaining to city business or any item, uh, and items not on the agenda, um, or not on the, sorry.
Yeah, not only.
Business, old business or future items, you can speak to anything that is on the consent agenda. Um, each item on old business, new business, um, will have its own dedicated public comment time for that particular item. Um, and if anyone is interested in doing general public comment, uh, please line up at the podium, it will be the same rules as this first public summit, where you will have three minutes to speak, and optionally, please say your name and address, uh, to start out, uh, for the agenda. Yeah.
Welcome.
Hi. Uh, hello, and thank you to the council for your service, um, and for hearing these public comments today. If you don't know me, my name is Patricia Lord. I'm the Executive Director of the Siskiyou County Arts Council, and I'm also a resident of Dunsmere. Um, I wanted to come before you today to provide a comment about the building vacancy downtown, and in particular, the California Theater. Uh, I understand that the issues with the California Theater have been ongoing for decades, much longer than I've, um, been involved with the issue, so I'm aware of the complexity of this as well as, um, with the theater, as well as other buildings in downtown. Um, I've had conversations with community members and government officials in multiple, um, communities and multiple counties in Northern California about this issue, in not our issue, but issues, um, relevant to this, uh, in every community in Northern California. So it's persistent and it's widespread, and there's not a single solution within, um, the context that we're talking about to, um, resolve it, and I imagine it must be very frustrating for the city council to be repeatedly asked, what are you going to do to address it? So within that context, I wanted to extend, um, an invitation to the City of Dunsmere not to solve it by yourselves, but rather to work with your community organizations to create consistent activity around the issue. Um, the Siskiyou County Arts Council is very interested in developing more community engagement in downtown, as well as working on downtown revitalization in Dunsmere, so. Um, and we are also willing and able to secure funding to do this work. So many of the buildings are irreplaceable for multiple reasons, and while I understand that, um, the council must take thought and care into weighing the cost or risk into taking action, I also want us to all keep in mind the opportunity cost, what we're giving up by not taking decisive action. Demolition by neglect is.
One minute left, by the way.
Sure, thank you. Uh, demolition by neglect is one of the biggest threats to the character and quality of our downtown, and whether by intention or lack of resources or inaction, and despite good intentions, if the historic buildings in Dunsmere, uh, deteriorate beyond repair or reasonable expense to repair, then we're all going to be poorer for it, so I hope the council seriously weighs the consequences of delay along with the cost of expediency. Um, and it, I would just add that it's not, I wouldn't consider prudent to carefully measure out expense of the action taken if time will undo all of that, um, careful measurement, so, thank you, and again, um, I'd love to extend an invitation to work more closely with the city, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Booyah.
Good timing, you had four seconds left.
Peter, ours still the same address. Thank you very much, Patricia, thank you, Tim, and the growing number of citizens that are trying to save our historic district. For the benefit of the city manager and the city staff, the address is fifty-eight twenty-seven Sacramento Avenue. Fifty-eight twenty-seven Sacramento Avenue, it's historically recognized as the Waggoner Building. It was constructed in nineteen oh three after the big fire on Sacramento Avenue, and as we're all excited about Railroad Days beginning tomorrow, I wish every one of you would go down to fifty-eight twenty-seven Sacramento Avenue right next to the Brown Trout Building, and what will you see? You'll see a broken front window with plate glass sitting inside. What else will you see? You'll see a failed facade on this building that is about to fall off and potentially injure somebody. What else will you see? You'll see an open window on the second floor, and through the open window, you can see a big hole in the roof. What else will you see? You'll see a sidewalk that is heaved and broken and caused an injury to an eighty-year-old citizen about a year ago, where he shattered his elbow and broke three ribs on the unsafe sidewalk. And what I have heard is the broken window was an accident. It was caused by a tree trimming company, and that the owner of the building said, oh, oh, thank you for letting me know, this was thirty days ago, and by God, we'll get that window fixed. Go look at it tomorrow, go look at it over the weekend, and listen to what Patricia said. You all took great credit for passing the vacant and abandoned building ordinance.
One minute.
Has it been inspected yet, inside or outside? Has the owner been asked? Are there transients living in the building? We don't know. I know it's easy to get into. It's an eyesore. Any sort of urban redevelopment strategy. And what I hear Councilmember Deutsch is we really can't do anything as a city because we have limited resources. And so it's really a question for the resources we do have. Having sat in one of these chairs and fought for a full-time code enforcement officer, fought for a city manager that cares about renewing the community. I know at least one council member cares, but where are the rest of you? And how long are we going to look at that building falling apart? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We hate it when that happens. Wrong kind of mic drop.
I don't know that that's the best spot for it.
Uh, Kevin Tinsky, five nine four five Dunsmere Avenue. Here to talk about the library. Dunsmere Libraries had some, has some issues. I was in here a couple of months ago talking to you about it. I'm sure you guys remember Tim. He's been in here before talking about it too. Uh, so it's, it's an ongoing issue with the roof, uh, roof leak. It's, uh, obviously not raining right now. The reason I wanted to talk to you about it now though, is because, uh, I know that the council was working on trying to get us a contractor and that's awesome. Thank you. Uh, we were, we were hoping to hear something back on how that's going because, uh, you know, I, I don't know if any of you have gotten any work. Well, Dave knows. Guys are booked up for months out. Every, everybody is working already, you know, uh, so we were hoping to get this done, you know, before we lose any more books or, or have any more damage to the, to the building and that would have to be done. You know, we, we'd want to be getting started on it this summer. Like if you were going to be doing a whole roof, you, you would want to probably jump into it a couple of months ahead of time. And so, uh, so that's one thing you, and you guys are already aware of the roof. I know that you are, um, and I know that, that you've been working on it. And, uh, that's, that's cool. What, what I wanted to ask you about, um, was we've been having some, some issues with, uh, the communication between the Friends of the Dunsmere Library, which, uh, for those of you don't know, the Friends of the Dunsmere Library is made up of citizens who, uh, we basically just try to keep the library going. You know, we, we figure out what needs to be done, help. You know, we work with the city on keeping that building open. And, uh, so we were just hoping that we could either, you know, maybe you guys can delegate somebody and we can delegate somebody, a point of contact, um, but a regular, a regular thing so that there's some give and take and, and we're not exhausting the, the avenues that we already have for communication and we're not, we're not burning you out with, uh, unsolicited and unreturned emails or phone calls or any of that stuff. So we just, we, we don't want to be, uh, we don't want to be in the situation where, you know, we're getting annoyed with each other or, or any of that. We really want to work with you guys on this because it's going to take the city council, the, you know, the Friends of the Dunsmere Library and, and the patrons of the library, you know, I know we all care about this and we want to keep it open. So if, you know, we could get together on that, just sit down and talk about it sometime about, you know, how we can keep that going back and forth between us and make sure that some of these issues get addressed because they've been, they've been around a while. So, and that's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for caring, Kevin.
Uh, I'm Mario. There's a couple of things. You guys know I've been around quite a while and, uh, worked with quite a few city managers. And I've always asked for and requested the full packet on council. Um, as treasurer, I would get briefings once a month from the city managers. They were always, uh, willing and open discussions and looking at the agenda. And after having talked to them, um, I could keep up with the business of the city. I have been researching a couple of things that are in the budget. And as far as I can find, they haven't been passed by council or in front of council, which means they haven't been in front of the public. And so I'm getting a little bit uncomfortable. So I'm going to ask you guys to stand on my side and ask me to be able to receive a full printed out copy now. It takes a little more technology now, uh, with what you guys have. It would cost me a certain considerable amount of money in software and computers to get updated, but the public should have access to a written out version of this. Um, you know, there's a lot of talk about not stove piping and sunshine laws and all this. And it seems like we're finding ways to get around it and not get it done. I'm just saying let's get more in front of the people with what's going on. Let's explain more to the people that's, that's what's happening. And for me, this packet would mean a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Anyone else from the audience, um, would like to speak? Feel free to go up to the podium now. And anyone who's on Zoom, um, please use the uh, raise your hand button to indicate that you would like to speak. And seeing none, I will close public comment for this evening. Thank you to everyone who spoke today. And with that, we're going to move on to council and staff comments. And we will start with Sergeant Ortiz.
I know how it is, but trust me.
Uh, this is for, uh, the month of May. City of Dunsmere is contracted for five thousand two hundred and eighty hours of patrol time for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. As of this date, five thousand three hundred ninety-three hours have been completed. Uh, eighty-three percent of the fiscal year is complete. We're currently at a hundred and two percent of the con, hundred and two of the contracted hours have been completed. Uh, for the month of May, Sheriff's Office, uh, did five hundred and eighty hours of service. We had two hundred and sixteen calls for service. Uh, we took twelve cases, issued seven citations, had four misdemeanor and one felony arrests. Everything's still pretty much on par with, uh, last year. Uh, we had an increase in disturbing the peace incidents. We, uh, jumped up from thirteen to twenty-one. Our traffic stops, uh, we've continued to issue a lot more warnings than citations, but we had thirty-five this month versus, uh, seventeen, uh, last year. Uh, school checks are still up. Uh, no domestic violences. Those are actually down. We had four last year, zero this year. Um, overall, I'm, I'm impressed with the proactivity on the part of the deputies. Uh, the notable incidents, uh, May seventeenth on the fifty-seven hundred block of Dunsmere Avenue. We had a physical altercation involving, involving multiple male subjects, one of which was said to be armed with a machete. Uh, an uninvolved male subject happened to cross the altercation, attempted to break it up and was subsequently struck in the arm with the machete. Uh, the subject wielding the machete has been arrested for assault with a deadly weapon and his case is pending with the DA's office. Yes, I'm glad that wasn't my arm.
But he's on the streets now.
I guess you'd have to exercise your right to vote for stiffer laws, Dave. The next event was the twenty-seventh of May on Needham Avenue. Uh, this was reported as something that was awful. It wound up being drunken people that misreported the incident. The intoxicated female caller reported that the father of her child and her cohabitant, uh, was threatening her and threatening to shoot anyone who arrived to help her. Uh, that prompted a large law enforcement response. This took place late at night, three hours of the morning. Uh, there was PA announcements and a felony felony contact took place, uh, until we could figure out what had gone on. May have been, it may have been, but, uh, thankfully no crimes had been committed. Uh, they were, they were drunk in their own home and, uh, got a little bit dramatic on the phone. Uh, the parties were separated, went their own ways, and we haven't been back since. Um, another notable, notable incident that has taken place this month, uh, recently, but I'm sure a lot of the, the public is aware of it. On the tenth of June, uh, the fifty-five hundred block of Dunsmere Avenue near the Dunsmere supermarket, a, uh, multi-vehicle collision was reported. Uh, what had happened is a, the driver of the vehicle was on Dunsmere Avenue, uh, struck at least one parked vehicle, wiped out a city-owned fire hydrant. Um, a DUI investigation was conducted and the driver was, uh, placed under arrest for DUI. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Uh, go ahead, Chris.
Sergeant, um, yes, the question I had is with, uh, beer state five, business coming up and also with Mont Road, are you kind of tuned in to how those things are moving along and how it's going to affect, I mean, how it's going to affect you and you know, we've gone through this several years.
Emergency accesses and stuff.
I could come in on that. Okay. Yeah. Rich, Rich wasn't in the meeting today, but, but Ben was. Um, so we had an emergency response meeting and I can, if you have any other questions for Rich and I could, I was going to address them mine. Thanks.
Thank you. That's good.
So. All right. With that, I'll move on to, uh, Dustin for your, uh. Yeah. So outside of the agenda, the only thing I had on my list was Caltrans. Um, because it's become a big issue. And so, uh, to address your, your questions, so there's, as you could see, there's a mass amount of construction beginning and causing backups already. Um, and they haven't even got the K-rail in place yet. And so, um, we've had, I don't know how many meetings, I think three or five since last meeting or something like that. A lot. And, uh, so today we met on the emergency, uh, I think emergency evacuation and, and emergency response and all of that related stuff and how that impacts how we respond as a, as, uh, whether it's both the police, sheriff, you know, all of the, all of different aspects of pub, of that service and those services. And, uh, we're kind of in a, in a little bit of a, a pickle where we're, we don't have Mont Road fixed yet. So, um, that is a component of what's going on. So there is some repairs going to begin on that, uh, hopefully Tuesday, I believe. Um, so Caltrans has to do some repairs before the county can do their repairs. Then they'll be reopened. Uh, we discussed a lot about, um, evacuation routes and those kinds of things and how to limit some of the challenges we had up on, uh, the last time up on, uh, Old Stage Road. And, uh, we're working with CHP and, and Sheriff's Department of the county to kind of, uh, put some stuff in place that won't allow heavy commercial traffic, uh, tractor trucks and tractor trailers and those kinds of things. And so there's a lot of those discussions going on. Um, but essentially it's going to be a tough summer. Um, and we've already seen backups and Sergeant Ortiz, I know was stuck in traffic, uh, on his way here tonight.
Certainly was.
And, uh, and at these lights, yeah.
Yeah, that's not for that.
Very good when there's no way out, right? And so that is, that is a very strong concern. We have a weekly update um, meeting with Caltrans, um, added to our plate now that, uh, either myself or, uh, Public Works Director De La Bana or, uh, or Chief Padilla, one of us will attend that, uh, to answer any of their questions, but also to help, um, help kind of bring up any issues here that we're seeing that that could help.
Yeah, we don't want to get stuck in a fishbowl.
Exactly. And, and they're very aware of that. Um, we talked about, um, evacuation, um, and those kinds of things and, and how that would work. And so there should be some information coming on out on that shortly and we'll publish that.
They had contingencies on the last time when they tore up the freeway that were, uh, you could, they would, they, if something happened, they would allow, and then we had the emergency lanes too. So that's food for thought.
Yeah. So that component of it will, um, there was discussion about stopping all traffic and then blowing it in all directions on all lanes, no matter whether it's south or northbound, depending on which direction they need to go.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. And so we, we did have a lot of those discussions and, and more of that information will come out through, uh, through, um, the, the PIO for Caltrans, but also, and then, uh, there'd be radio ads and television and newspaper. And so they're, they're going to try and hit it differently this time. I, I don't know that I totally trust that yet. I still live on that side of the mountain. Um, and so it's, it's.
Yeah. Well, you're Moses, bro. Don't lead the lambs to slaughter. You gotta let us know.
I know. And so it, it is in discussion and, uh, they are trying to do better than they did last time. And, and there was, I don't know, was there forty people in the room this morning? Trying to make sure that we can still provide emergency services in, in all capacities. Yeah.
Cool. Thank you for your efforts on that.
And then, uh, as far as the rest of the Caltrans, so, um, I know a big impact for us is Palindali Park. And, and how that is going, um, I haven't got a, a total good update on that, um, but there will be, essentially have some closures. They got to set up their causeway and do all this stuff. And so, but there's been some shifts in the project a little bit, uh, relative to, uh, how they have to work around Union Pacific and those kinds of things and, and, uh, the river and, uh. Does that road be closed during that construction, the bridge? Um, only temporarily. Only temporarily. Yeah. So that, that is, uh, just that temporary timeframe where they're working over that section. And then it'll be, you know, so it, it won't be closed very long. I, I mean, maybe a week closure. And so. Anything else? No, everything else is on the agenda. Okay. Um.
Yeah, real quick, Michael, thank you so much, our vice mayor. Uh, uh, so I'm the finance director, uh, but I'm making a, uh, announcement about the active transportation planning grant. So there is for anybody that rides bicycles or walks through Dunsmere, they want to get your input. So this is for community input tomorrow, Friday, tomorrow, uh, from four to seven, Saturday and Sunday from twelve to three. So Saturday all day. Uh, come give input, tell us, tell whomever what you want to see, bike lanes, pedestrian lanes, all that, all that kind of stuff. And so it is, so again, tomorrow in this room right here, four to seven, on Saturday, just we'll be out in the, on Dunsmere Avenue, then Sunday back in this room. And you don't have to come to all of it, but come to whatever you want. The main point is provide whatever input you can on active transportation. All right. Thank you.
I just have a comment I'd like to make on that note. Um, if there's any way we could get, um, some flyers out for that, uh, since we'll have a whole bunch of people right over there at Railroad Days around the same time. If we could try to get some people to over here, I think that would be extremely solid.
I don't know about flyers, but we could just drag them by their shirt, come on over.
Yeah.
If they're on a bus. It's going to be there.
Right.
All right.
And with that, uh, we'll move on to committee reports. Nope. We just did that. Counselor.
I don't believe.
Sorry. Yes. You are correct, Bruce. Um, we'll start with Dave.
Okay. The first thing that I want to say is, um, I've been brought, it's been brought to my attention that we had an officer hurt, Adam Christie. Um, I want him and his family to know that this council in this community is behind him and his efforts to heal. Uh, we support him a thousand percent and, um, I'm sorry it happened, man. Get better. The second thing is, it's time. Railroad Day starts tomorrow. I want to thank everybody and their efforts. Um, there's been so much work been put on to make this weekend happen. It's such a good venue. I gotta give Cheryl and everybody props. They put together, I'm really looking forward to this weekend. Um, I just want everybody to be safe. Yeah. We got a pancake breakfast at seven, seven-thirty starts up at the community building. The Rotary's putting that on. Keep in mind that everything that you do for the Rotary's, it all goes back to our kids. One way or another, whether it's scholarships, backpacks program, it's all about the kids and I'm proud to be part of that. Is that little lady Patricia? I really want to thank you for your comments. It's, it's, it's a slap in the face like that that works. And I took your words to heart. Okay. Thank you. I, I too, I too did ask Eric from Fishing Game about stocking the fish, but he don't know nothing. He's just the other guy. But he said it is on, it's on, uh, Facebook. So if you look up Fishing Game, they will give you the schedule. And they used to put fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred pounds every week throughout the summer. I know the water's running a little too fast right now, but in a week or two, it should be good and it should be on top of that. Mario, I'm sure, sorry, your truck got killed. And, um, I will miss the fire hydrant and the fork alone. So other than that, um, thank you for your report. Appreciate it. And, uh, I'm good. Let's have a great weekend.
Thank you. Uh, as far as the, uh, pancake breakfast, I just should point out for anybody who gets a chance to hear this, it's a little bit different this year. Uh, in the past, all of the Rotary Pancake Breakfasts were, were pretty much your standard, come into the community center or wherever it was, there'd be, um, obviously. There'd be, um, obviously pancakes with scrambled eggs and things like that. Because of the, uh, new relationship with the softball tournament, it's a little bit different. We're opening up earlier, it's gonna be at seven thirty. And what we're doing is, uh, tomorrow night, a large number of the Rotary members will be putting together breakfast burritos. And the whole idea is instead as the, uh, the softball players show up to play, they can grab a breakfast burrito and go off and enjoy themselves. So with that in mind, we're not gonna be having eggs, no scrambled eggs if you're an egg fan. But there will be a lot of burritos and again, this is a, I've got a lot of people, I don't understand, oh, we're gonna be there, we're gonna be there, so try and check out Pancake Breakfast. The only other good thing I have is something a little personal, uh, back in, uh, January of two thousand fifteen, that was the first time after I moved here in two thousand eight. That I got involved with the city, I was, uh, a member, uh, citizen member of the, the big, uh, water project. The water re study and everything back in two thousand fifteen. And then in, uh, June of two thousand fifteen, there was a vacancy on the council and that was the date, um, June fifteen, eight years ago. That I was first brought onto the city council, so this is my anniversary.
Eight years, baby.
Eight years, it's sort of like two blood terms and I've got a year and a half with, uh, it's kind of a budget or bonus situation. But it's been an honor to serve the city and citizens and I just wanted to take a moment to say that, thanks.
All right, I'll keep my council comments fairly short. I do just have a few, um, things that I want to bring up. One is that as we move into summer and the days get hotter, I'd like to just remind everyone to be aware of fire danger, um. You see anyone burning or. Smell smoke or anything like that, make sure to report it. Um, next is also along with Railroad Days, there's also the softball tournament, so if you want, looking for some good entertainment besides the live music and everything downtown. Try to make it up to the baseball field and, uh, enjoy a game. Uh, the farmer's market is starting up on six twenty-nine, that'll be, um, also the date of our next council meeting. So try to go hit up the farmer's market, grab a few things and then come down here, uh. The last thing I was going to mention is that, um, if you're driving north or, uh. North or coming back down to Dunsmere on the freeway, um, just as we've already mentioned a few times. Try to factor in that extra wait time on the freeway, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be waits in the afternoon, starting pretty much from now on. The next couple of months. Um, doesn't.
We all do. Dustin was first.
Yep, I, I wanted to mention, I had forgot and it was, it's on my list, uh, so. The, um, we will be beginning our water main replacement project. For the Public Works Building in the Community Center Parking Lot, and so that begins on Tuesday. Um, and will probably last for about two weeks and that, um, so there will be potentially some limited traffic availability to get down to. Uh, down to Botanical Gardens, but the parking lot will be open and you'll be able, there'll be single vehicle pass through, but. It's not typically too busy, but just be aware, we're be doing some construction work in that area.
Yeah. And Dave next, then.
Um. Mr. Vice Mayor, you had mentioned fire prevention and it is that time. Not, not only do we need to, you know, have safe space, clear our yards and all that stuff. But there's a stupid little thing that a lot of fires happen every year and that's dryer vents. Clean your dryer vents. When it's hot and you're doing laundry, man, what a way to go, huh, from a dirty pair, trying to dry a dirty pair of underwear. Anyway, clean the dryer vents, it's a big thing, uh, if you don't believe me, ask a fireman, he'll tell you. Thank you.
I saw the point on the Mary, you may want to, uh, explain to the public our changes in the scheduled meetings you mentioned.
Ah, yes, so, um, just in, for everyone's reference, um. Given that the sixth of July, which would is our, which was our next regularly scheduled meeting is a day or two after fourth of July. Um, and most, a lot of members of the public will be out of town, certain members of staff will be taking vacation. Um, so we are moving the July sixth meeting to June twenty-ninth. Uh, it worked out well this year, since there's five Thursdays in June, we were able to, uh, just move that meeting forward a week. Uh, so be aware, there will be no meeting on July sixth, but there will be a meeting on June twenty-ninth. Uh, all right. So, sorry, I need to Juliana being here, uh, with that, we will move on to committee reports. I know we did have a finance committee, um, meeting, but were there any other committees that met in?
No, sir.
Last two weeks, no, okay, um. So on the note of finance committee, um, first off, I'm gonna start with. Um. Moving forward, um, I'm gonna be proposing that we move the finance committee from the Monday. Before council meetings to the Monday after council meetings. Um, and I want to do that so that way any decisions that are made at finance committee or any recommendations that we want to give. Um, have enough time to be on the agenda, but generally the agenda comes out. Um, before or during the finance committee meeting. And therefore, if there's anything that needs to be changed or anything that's found, there isn't enough time to get it onto the agenda for the city council meeting. Um, which is one reason why we won't be finalizing the budget this meeting, um. And also why we had to do community promotions in front of the council, three weeks after we did it in front of the finance committee. Where if we moved those dates around, we can more easily.
Right.
Um, get it onto the next meeting and I think it's just streamline everything. Um, so I'm not sure if that'll start at the next finance committee meeting or the one after, I know, um, Dustin and I'll have to discuss that. Um, but move shortly here, that will probably, or that will switch.
There's no reason for us to make any action on it.
No, I'm just informing you and members of the.
Are you gonna tell us what happened at the finance committee?
I am going to do that next, um. So the community promotions, um, everyone, or all the groups came in front and gave their presentations, they were all excellent presentations. Um, the finance committee's recommendation at the current time was to, um. Fund ninety percent of everyone's tasks, so basically take ten percent off of the amounts that were asked for. Uh, those, um. The informational packets that were given to us, um. Uh, to the finance committee for those presentations, I believe they will be in the next agenda packet, so that way, uh, council will have a chance to review them. Before the June twenty-ninth meeting where we will do the official vote to allocate those funds. Okay, and then the budget also with that change, there was a change to the budget, which is why we also won't be doing. That's today, or well, well, when we get to the budget, I'm going to make a motion to, um. Put the budget off till the twenty-ninth, table the budget till the next twenty-ninth meeting as well.
Okay. Exactly.
I don't feel it's appropriate with only three members, but we'll get that to that when we get to that particular item, um, and that's finance committee. Uh, with that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from June first.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from June first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, that was the only item or that was the. Move on to item number ten, the consent agenda, which is the check register for five twenty-seven through six nine, uh.
Open up the public.
Hmm.
Open up the public.
No, not.
All right, then I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye, oh, yeah, aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, and with that, we'll move on to our public hearing today, which is a zoning code update of our Dunsmere Municipal Code. And that will be presented by our planner, Rico Tinsman.
You're not gonna read the whole thing, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, no.
For those of you who are wondering why that joke is funny.
First of all, I, I want to say I appreciate practical joke of the short chair, really nice. Um, so this is what you look like, Bobby. I know, it's been, I think it's probably been, uh, three years since I've seen you all, so, uh, it's nice to be here in person again.
Oh.
Thank you, so, uh, I'm not gonna take your time up with, uh, you know, this code update, I think is about. Two hundred forty gauges, right? It's significant, so I'm just gonna kind of touch on the main points. Which is, uh, you know, for, you know, everyone that's here, so that they understand what the city is trying to do, uh, the. Dunsmere's, uh, zoning code. Is unfortunately a mess. At the current code, there's lots of internal conflicts, you know, the thing was written probably forty years ago. And it's been tinkered with over the years, I've tinkered with it a lot over the last nearly twenty years. Uh, and, but there have been so many small tinkers. Uh, and anytime you change the code, you need to check to make sure that what you're doing is internally consistent. There, this city has gone through, uh, there've been a number of planners over the years, uh. Some things were done, a lot of things are done correctly, some things were done improperly and there's, you know, there's internal conflicts. And conflicts with the general plan, it's, it's just kind of, um, a, a mess, yes, sir. What is the relationship between the zoning code and the, and the general plan? So, uh, the general plan establishes, uh, sort of broad general policy for the city. Uh, as well as, uh, you know, land use classifications, it, it deals with a bunch, but it establishes a base land use classification. With which the zoning must be consistent, yeah, so, uh, whereas you've got, um. Uh. Well, let's put it this way, one of the things we're doing here, one of the big things we're doing is, uh, you know, a button is a second is. Where we're introducing mixed use, so, so right now we've got, you know, your sort of standard traditional residential, you know, low density. In this, that city residential and then commercial uses, industrial uses, blah, blah, blah. So one of the things that we're, the big thing that we're doing here is that we're introducing mixed use, so. And to do so, we also have a minor different plan amendment, or minor.
General plan amendment.
Okay, that's, to basically introduce a, uh, mixed use land use classification, that the mixed use zoning would be consistent.
So in other words, in the general plan, you got these bones that these bones have been identified and now we're trying to move that into that list.
So the general plan, uh, sorts outlines a broad, uh, approach to the city's planning for next twenty years. Right, uh, it was written in two thousand six, or adopted in two thousand six, right? Uh, we're getting ready to update it next year, uh, it's going to be a minor update just because of budget, but. That's the general, very broad, general. Zoning is very precise, uh, and, uh. It, it basically implements everything that you have in your government, it's how you, how you effectively move forward in, in, you know, there's other. Your general plan has, we're talking specifically about zoning, right, but the general plan itself. It has several required elements and in elements like a chapter that addresses, uh, an issue of community importance. And there are required topics of. Housing, uh, land use, safety, open space, circulation, noise. Uh, you know, and it's, the list is being added to by the state, uh, now with environmental justice. So, um, really what this is, what we're focused on here is just taking, taking our, our zoning code, that's, hasn't really been updated in forty years. With the exception of these, these tinkers along the way, as a result, the code generally looks backwards, right? Forty years ago. We didn't have cell phone, well, we had a few, right? Then I remember the old, you know, the old cell phones, the old brick and whatnot. But, you know, there's just a lot of stuff in here that, you know, taco trucks. We didn't have taco trucks forty years ago, so, uh, to those things that we cooked in here, right? It's all the things that we want to try to provide our community moving forward to make it, uh, you know, contemporary uses. Uh, you know, rather than a, you know, a haberdasher, uh, where you're gonna go get your hat. You're gonna go into the cell phone store, you know, it's just sort of, it's brushing off, it's essentially what this is, is a massive cleanup of the code. And then the, one of the big issues that we have, the really, the most fundamental, uh, changes here with this only point update. Is that we're taking the, the, the commercial zoning districts. We've got the mid hook commercial, we don't have a lot of it, uh, it's up by the gas station. And then we've got a bunch of C two, which basically runs from Oak Street all the way up to, uh, the Siskiyou Boulevard interchange. Right, so that's, that's a C two zoning district and that, that central commercial zoning district was all designed for the historic district. You know, it's got twenty-five hundred square foot minimum lot sizes, twenty-five foot wide lots, you know, it's, it's, you know, hard to have lock coverage. It's for, it's for the downtown because they are together at present. What this code update does is, because we, I've heard from numerous, numerous of those years. That when you have a commercial property that's improved with residential uses, it's really difficult to get conventional financing. To make, I just said loaned it, uh, you know, home equity line of credit, make improvements to your house or to even get a buyer for your property. So are you saying? Are you saying?
Sorry. That instead of having it being built as commercially, it's only as mixed, which would then take away the penalty that comes from.
Exactly, so really largely what we're doing, we're breaking up the historic district, creating its own district, the town senate district. Right, so that it has the old C two stuff, right, where we allow, uh, residential by right only on the second floor. About maintaining commercial space for, for merchant, for needs. And then outside of the downtown, where we've got, uh, you know, all this residential use in the C two. I mean, if you look at what's outside in the C two, outside of the historic district, there's mostly residential uses and these, and these are the poor individuals that can't. Get loans to fix up their properties, so what does that do to our community? It has, has this, this massive effect of disincentivizing, discouraging investment or reinvestment. Rehabilitation of our properties in the central area of our community. So what we're doing is we're just simply renaming, instead of it being the, the central, uh, commercial zoning district, it's gonna become a central mixed use. When the airport be mixed use as well, the airport, um.
Yeah.
Airport is a different story, so that we are, we're, we are changing not just the mixed use, but, uh, we are also implementing. When we updated the general plan in two thousand six, we created a bunch of new land use classes. Open space, uh, resource lands, public facilities or public agency, um, uh, plan development, mixed use plan development. So when we did, when we wrote the general plan, we, uh, you know, we made all the land up surrounding the airport, mixed use plan development. It's still zone R one. So, uh, this project would actually take that, that R one property at the airport and make it zone, plan development, consistent with the general. We would also take the, the zoning at the airport. Uh, where we actually didn't, uh, made like the airstrip, like the air, like circuit, airfield. We made that in two thousand six, we made it public facilities, right, since then we've blanked in our.
Blake's got it up behind you if you want to use it for any kind of reference.
So, uh, we've blanked in the run, so one of the things we want to do is incorporate more of that area into the plan development. And then, uh, simply make it so the whole, you know, sort of that, that area, you see that's all green up there with the. Right, so, so typically what you do, hang on, so typically what you do with airfields is that you would have, uh, overlay airport zoning districts. That's, you know, protect the approach, you know, the approach to parking zone, transition zone, our complex. All that stuff that you typically have in there and that, um. But we really don't have land up at the airport other than really the city name, right? There, there's a little bit south that, uh, is used as private.
Fifty-two acres.
Yeah, tho- those, those big properties are in timber production, so what the PD does is it basically allows all the same uses as the old one. So we're not taking anyone's rights, they can still build a home if they want. But if they, if they want to do something bigger, then they want to go, oh, I've got the springs designed for this. Develop that one, but up there, uh, we would, uh, we would be able to do so within the PD, if it's agreeable to the council and whatnot. And provided, it complies with the city, so we haven't adopted, uh, airport zoning. But what we have adopted is airport land use compatibility plans for the airport, which establishes, I can, uh, I would add, uh. Proven prohibited uses, compatible uses, uh, for that airport property, so that's one of the things we'd also look at, look at, uh. When a PD is proposed and named that land, so, uh, and while likely, it's helpful. Uh, again, we'll be coming back with a, a general plan update. I would still like to, uh, come back and actually you and airport zoning overlaying.
Well, it's when you come back with the general plan next, you know, that could be part of the, stating this vision of what the airport would be like and setting it up.
Well, it's essentially, there's a, there's state law that provides for these overlay zones. Uh, which we would simply implement those as well as the airport land use compatibility plan that we have, uh, incorporating zoning for. Uh, that said, I talked to the county, uh, two days ago and they're, they're now looking at updating the airport land use compatibility plan, so. You know, kind of see where all that goes, um, the, so let me think about this, the. One of the things, uh, with this code update is. You know, there's. It was really, it was tough, uh, when we first looked at. it was really, it was tough. Uh, when we first looked at this, one of the things we were trying to do is we're trying to, um, with John, I, I, the question I apologize, I've heard this story before. Uh, I swear when they did the zoning in Dunsborough, there was way too much whiskey involved and, uh, it was done in a barroom somewhere. Because it, it is, it is all intense, you know, like, you know, forty units to the acre. I mean, I understand Dunsborough was bustling at one point. But forty units to the acre is Sacramento standings. I have not seen forty units to the acre anywhere north of Sacramento. I'm sure some, maybe Chicago. I don't think it's even a red and brown by time. But forty, you know, so most cities around here, you get max out seventeen, twenty to the eight. Where, you know, not only do we have like allowed intense residential use, but so much of our community, like we talked about, is overs over commercial others. So this is, you know, one thing we were trying to do is we're really trying to focus development on Dunsborough. Right, we, we want to, uh, we want to encourage development where there's easy transportation. We're going to reduce vehicle miles traveled, improve air quality, uh, we're going to provide access to public transit. That's the, that's where we go for, for Dunsborough. Um, so at first we were thinking, you know, how, how do we, you know, how do we do this? And the thought was, well, you know, we simply reduce the densities elsewhere. You know, from the R three, bring it down from like forty units to the acre because honestly, pretty well doubtless to me, right? There, there's nowhere, there's nowhere that you can put in an ass of apartment complex because we all have these small lots. It's just not happening. Um, but at the same time, that is potentially impacting some, right? You know, and the last thing I do is have a taking playing against the city that we, you know, someone was planning on doing something and then we now made it so they can't do so. So, uh, but the, the hope was that we could actually try to say, hey, we're gonna keep forty units to the acre on Dunsborough. But up there in our, you know, R two, R three, we're gonna pull that back a little bit to try to encourage people to develop and redevelop on Dunsborough with your, uh, more intense uses. So, um, we ultimately did not do that, just because of the concern for, um, you know, concerning, uh, people being, uh, feeling that they have one, have something that they want to protect. So, uh, ultimately, uh, what we've done is just to try to make the, the C two outside of the historic district as compatible as possible. Taking it to within this, within this sort of district, the focus is on commercial uses, right? You know, residential use is only allowed on the second floor above. Unless you've got a work unit, in which case we've got new state entry work, so they have to be in the back. Or you've got, um, uh, you do allow the use for the process for residential still on the street level for things like the travelers hotel where we have, uh, accessible units we need to put in for the condos. But we couldn't get them because there's elevator shafts. So we had, we do keep a, uh, use for process for residential use. Outside the historic district, no use for, no ground for requirements.
Hypothetically. Somebody lives on Siskiyou Avenue and they're a contractor, but their house is also their office. Their house is also their yard. Where all the equipment and everything's at. Is it changing?
It changes insofar as I can, I can't help that contractor in restoring the equipment. But what I can tell you is that instead of the use for requirement that we currently have for home occupation, which is going to cost me about eighteen hundred dollars, it's now over the count per.
So not eighteen hundred dollars?
Not eighteen hundred dollars. We want.
We, we won't, we won't beat you up.
People to come in and get permits and we want them to get, uh, business license. Right, so when we get, I tell you, there's all, you know, there's lots of people working from their homes here. Uh, and that would not have used for, so we want to make this easier and get people to have different licenses and security certificates for the city.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah.
I understand in terms of our process here, has the planning commission already?
Planning commission had two public workshops on this center code update started back in February. They have then had two public hearings on this, or actually a public hearing that was continued for two meetings. Uh, to allow sufficient opportunity for people to get involved in comments. Uh, at this point, they have adopted the planning commission at their last meeting adopted resolution, uh, DC two thousand and twenty-three dash zero two, resolution, the planning commission, city of Dunbar, recommending the city council adopt the draft initiative, say negative declaration, which, uh, that's a secret proponent of this, and approve the city of Dunbar zoning code. So they are done with it and at this point, we made a recommendation to you to approve, uh, this code update. So, um, with that, what we've got is, um, and when you're ready, we've got a, uh, so this did happen, you know, we had a fair, under California general policy act, granted a initial study. During development, the initial study, there were no, uh, adverse marble impacts that were identified. Which means that there's no mitigation measures in here to reduce impacts. So, uh, uh, as a result of draft negative declaration, uh, certainly with initial say for publication, see review comment for thirty days. As well as made available for, uh, public review, just general public review and comment. But we've got, uh, the only comment we got received on this was from, uh, fishing, Califar, the Department of Fish Wildlife, which they agreed that there's no impact with the product. Uh, that's been the only comments so far. So, um, uh, with that, we are, you know, because of that, we are recommending that you do tonight adopt the initial statement of declarations uh, as well as the general plan update. And that is, so those are both resolutions and then the ordinance uh, required refreshment, which was the zoning code update itself. Your zoning code. Now that has been reviewed, we recommend that tonight you would have a digital version. So, uh, there is, in fact, if you look on page.
We don't have a page.
I apologize. And the reason you don't, uh, you know, to address Mario's comment, the reason Mario did not receive a printout of this, uh, agenda pack is that the code update is, I don't even have. It's two hundred and thirty-two pages.
Well, we didn't even get agendas that are that. I have no verbiage.
There was a, the one, the, the, it was posted online as usual. And then there was an option, if anyone requested one, to have it printed, um, due to the abnormal length of this particular.
So, so the zoning code update is two hundred, I think, two hundred. I was. This is the initial setup. This is double sided. This is sixty pages and then the general plan, my general plan, that is another thirteen page set. So it's, it was a BP, uh, BP agenda pack. Uh, I do apologize. Uh, the, so, uh, basically I'm going to hand this office on the moment, so you can see what the, but on page thirteen, there are a number of suggested motions that are there for your consideration. Uh, they are to be made sequentially. So, uh, you know, one should be made and issued carry for the next. Okay.
Which page was this on?
It's beginning on page thirteen.
Thirteen should.
Mine decided not to be loaded today.
And with regard to the, uh, ordinance itself, because the ordinance, uh, is the, so the ordinance has, has an attachment. The, you know, the zoning code update. Uh, recommend that you do, uh, introduce it and read it by title only.
Yeah, the only thing I'm concerned about at the moment is that I remember in the past, we haven't had a public hearing in a while, but there's some kind of sequential set of things we're supposed to say that really important, John.
No, uh, it's not, it's not true to the planning commission, but they noted it here.
Oh, yeah.
And others there, so, uh,
You just read my title only, first of all. Yeah.
Well, like the one thing you do in the public comments.
Right, yes.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And there's a reprocess, but this is something, what's, what's the secret deal of it, uh, where it stands?
He said there is none.
Well, no, 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 no. We, we prepared a NAGA for. And it was, so the NAGA was circulated for, you know, it's gone through all the regular processes. So, so at this point, they're being asked, that's the first thing they're being asked to adopt is the, uh, if they look at, you know, once they get to their suggested motions. The first one is for adoption of the initial study negative declaration. The second one is for, um, adopting the general plan land use amendment. And then, uh, those are two resolutions.
Twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, seven and twenty twenty-three, eight are those two.
Correct. And then you have draft ordinance five, seven, five for a, uh, for a hopeful for introduction and first reading.
We have that as item number D on new business.
Do we go to public comment?
Yeah, um, with that, I'll open this up to public comment. It will work the same way as our other two public comments this evening. Um, everyone will either line up at the podium or raise their hand on Zoom and they will have three minutes. And with that, I will open this up to public comment.
Tim Holt, again, um, I have just a question and I think I know the answer, but, um, so, uh, as you know, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about the shortage of housing in general, you know, in the country, in California and so forth, in Siskiyou County. So my question is, um, as part of this, uh, revision and so forth, has consideration given to, um, you know, we're talking outside the C, outside the C two zone, um, to, uh, what would you call it? Multiplex apartments or apartment buildings way out, let's say, you know, in some of the residential streets of North Dunsborough, for example. Is that in here or not? Probably not. I didn't think so.
Yeah, we, we, there's no proposal, but well, that can be asked.
Okay, all right.
But what it does, uh, critically do for housing is that right now, if you want to, say you've got, uh, a piece of property up by Cave Springs. And you wanted to, uh, you speak to this property, you want to put it in a box. You, you can, you can go right ahead and do it, but you have to have ground floor commercial. And that for a lot of people is a deal breaker, right? Because you, we got a bunch of vacant commercial space downtown. Why do we want more commercial space up there that's sitting big, right?
Yeah.
So what this does is it eliminates that requirement for the ground floor commercial.
Okay, so for example, next to right south of Cave Springs, you have that used to be a service station, I think, right? Boat repair. So are you saying, for example, and I assume that's commercial zone, commercial?
Yes.
Are you saying that that property could be made into housing, apartments? Or is that what you're saying? If, if this houses or?
Well, yeah, let's, let's see, in fact, it's got a little, little tiny old acid one, but yes, like, so if you just take that land, yes.
It could be.
Right, right now you could go in there and put it in a box.
One minute now you can't. You don't have, not with this necessarily.
Right now you can go in and put it in a box, but it just has to be on the second floor and boat.
Yeah, okay.
So once, if this gets adopted,
Yeah.
you could put in ground floor residential. Do I think that's what would happen on that property? No.
All right, thank you.
On the note of this particular public comment, I would like to ask Rico a question um, that I think also might clarify this. I believe that under the current code, even in R one, and according to state law, uh, duplexes and triplexes are allowed in that, or is it just?
No, so what state, the state changed the law basically to allow cities that are either urban clusters or larger communities that are, like, to allow, uh, you know, lot splits. What we have, what the state really did to actually increase housing and maybe perhaps what you're thinking of are accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling. So, so those are, you know, that's the definition of the dwelling unit, right? And basically what, uh, we've always been, well, we didn't use a long time ago, it was used, then you could, you were allowed, you had to allow by right with certain standards. The, the, again, the regulations, I've got to love to say about them. The regulations have continued to evolve. And what went from a, you know, like four lines of your zoning code for second dwelling units is now six pages. So, uh, it's, yeah, it's, you, you can absolutely take any single family away and put in accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit as well and turn it into essentially a duplex or triplex.
That's an ADU's term, right?
ADU is the term, that big one. Now, there are certain, you know, restrictions on this and I'll tell you, the one that sort of disincentivizes the people the most with these is that under state law, you cannot, uh, you cannot acquire owner occupancy of an accessory dwelling or the primary dwelling prior to January first, two thousand and twenty-five. Just about every city I've encountered has said, great, as of January first, two thousand and twenty-five, we want owner occupancy of one of those units.
Hmm.
And that's the way it is currently written. Now, that gives us a few years, you know, do I think it's going to stay that way? No, I think the state of California is going to change a lot. And they're going to say, no, we're just doing away with, we're going to prohibit you from doing that. We'll have to make that a little amendment to the code later, but that's the way it's currently written.
No, thank you, Rico. Uh, is there any other public comment or are there any comments on Zoom? Anyone raise their hand on Zoom?
No.
All right, seeing none, I will close public comment for this item to move on to council discussion before we.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I move we adopt draft resolution twenty twenty-three.
That's, um, I believe that we have to do that down on the bottom.
Yes, we have to do that on items in new business. We, we have.
We drafted a public hearing component of it and then down on, uh, item, uh, well, that's where I was looking at.
You got page thirteen.
Look at the right there. There's also, it's, it's also under new business in addition to the public comment. Is there anything? Is there anything that we have to do right now before moving on, or do we have to do everything under item D?
If I were you, I'd be doing this under new business. I would handle this entire matter under, under the, unless John, have we done something different?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You got a public hearing rezoning code update. Right, that's eleven.
Mm-hmm.
Right there.
Eleven D, new busy. You've got public hearings, we actually have them.
Yeah, I have here. Yeah, I, I apologize. I didn't, I didn't catch that.
I guess, I mean, it doesn't matter. Good question.
Well, you're probably doing now.
Doing.
Yeah, you, you do have control of the item one, you're telling you.
I, I move that we consolidate thirteen D with item number eleven.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Now read them.
There we go.
Okay, I move we adopt draft resolution, uh, draft, draft resolution twenty twenty-three oh seven and draft resolution twenty twenty-three oh eight.
By title only?
No, and, uh, we waived the first reading of ordinance five, seven, five and approved the first reading of ordinance five, seven, five with title only.
I second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is just very clear, is that a roll call vote? No money?
Because we didn't adopt that ordinance.
Okay, I was just making sure that our, everything is covered, you know.
Okay.
Thank you, Rico.
Pleasure, thank you.
I, I agree.
You look funny in that little chair.
Thank you, Brian. All right, glad to see you all. Thank you very much.
Hey, you know how it went from four sentences to six pages? Is that your fault? I love to do.
One question real quick before I do leave this.
Gentlemen.
John, this is a question for you, which is the council has moved their July sixth meeting to July.
June twenty-ninth.
To June.
Two weeks from today.
So if you, if you move a regular, if you move a regular meeting, is it still your regular meeting as far as adoption of an ordinance?
Yes.
Or, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I mean, it's a regular.
Because it's posted.
When you, when you reschedule a regular meeting, say. Okay. Okay, then I will see you all very soon.
And before we move on to item number twelve, which is old business, I'm going to, uh, call a five-minute recess, so we will re meet at, uh, seven thirty-four.
Okay.
All right, I am going to bring the council meeting for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three back into order at seven thirty-five. Um, there has been a recommendation over the break to move um, items number thirteen B and C, which is the planning commissioner appointment and the snow removal ad hoc committee appointment, um, in front of item number twelve. So we'll do that next.
I can agree with that assessment. No problem.
No problems with that. So we'll do that and that means we are moving on to thirteen B, planning commissioner appointment.
Four hundred and thirty. Sure, I didn't figure it out back. It's, uh,
All right, um, seven have that in front of me here.
He's got, wow, that's tough.
Who applied for this position?
So we we only get, so for planning commission, all right. One second. Forgot my glasses. All right, mayor council. So we have uh, I'm not even looking at the right one. Goodness. We've received one application for planning commission. Um and uh I have it, I went over and printed out a copy because I realized, um Blake, can you uh scroll down and see if we can see the applicant, please?
Yeah, I guess so.
Yes, there, right there. So uh application is uh for Joanna Joanna Brooks. Um she's a landscape architect uh. And does a lot of planning, a large landscape for approximately twenty five years. Uh she's lived in Dunsmere for seventeen years and would love to be a part of Dunsmere's growth.
All right, in Miss.
But not me, but I did.
I think, hold on. She is the one that retracted her application.
Oh.
I did not see Julia Simon's application.
Two, so Julia, if you'd like to come on up.
So we had two. This one retracted. I got confused.
So yeah, we.
Welcome to the party.
Thanks.
Yeah, we had two, one retracted, so we have.
All right, so who are you?
I'm Julia Simon. Um I've been resident at Dunsmere for the past three plus years. My husband and I uh relocated here after extensive travel with intention to find a naturally beautiful, economical. And intimate community to call our home. To our good fortune, we found what we are looking for in Dunsmere. I grew up in a small community where I learned the value of preserving our natural resources. Holding room for all community members to have opportunity. And the negative impact of what prioritizing a one-sided agenda can have on the entire community. Excuse me for a second, lost my spot. Um oh, through this experience, I decided to do my best to live a life without bias. Live, leave a small environmental footprint and to create opportunity for others where I can. I feel these qualities serve me well as I approach decision-making and assess how to best proceed. I am open to progress and development while balancing preservation. I hope to call Dunsmere home for many years to come as my husband and I raise our family. And work towards our goal of opening a small family business here in town. I look forward to the prospect of serving my community in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Right now, we're open to questions from the council member. Yeah, so do you want to give us a background on on the, you know, your.
Education backgrounds, all of that.
Yep, so um I'm a high school graduate. I attended. Two semesters at uh Community College in Reading. Um. So that's my educational background. In my personal life, I, as mentioned, prioritize environmental conservation. I really do appreciate um opportunities for all walks of life. Um I grew up in a household. My father was a county planner for thirty five years, so I do have a little. Um it's in my blood, exactly. So, yeah, I look forward to potentially getting deeper entwined and learning more of the processes and having um. Something to do with that.
Yeah.
I want to reiterate what you just said. You're looking forward to get deeper. You're about to. Thank you for putting your hat around.
Thank you.
All right. Um. Yep, is there, we'll open this um. We'll open up for public comment for the position of planning commissioner or the applicants for this evening. Is there anyone? Who would like to make a public comment following the same rules for all of the other pub- public comments uh this evening? Seeing none in person and none in Zoom, I'm going to close public comment.
I make a motion that we accept her letter of interest and appoint her to the planning commission.
What was your last name?
Yeah, Julia Simon.
Julia Simon. All right.
I take it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, on the motion passage unanimous.
Welcome to the party.
Congratulations on joining the plan.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next we will be moving on to item number or thirteen C, which is the snow removal ad hoc committee appointments. Um.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um we had a lady here. We all know Jeannie.
Yep.
Um she had to go to work. We all need pizzas. We all need pizza. But um she's very. She's very interested in serving in this position. Um she asked me to speak for her because normally we like it when they're here.
Yep.
She was here. She had to go.
Yep.
Okay, um maybe next time that we could, on these appointments, we could put them. Earlier up so people could come and go and take care of their business. That's just something for future thought. But she's very interested. Um. Um I can't think of a better candidate because she knows the town. She's been here forever. She knows, hell, she probably knows the name of all of our childrens, so um. Uh she would, she would have my vote.
Okay.
Okay.
We will um also consider her this time in her absence. For those who um are also on that note, are we doing the council appointment as well or just the?
I think we should probably wait on the council appointments since we're missing.
Till we have the other two here. Okay, that sounds good. So we'll do the citizen appointments and then we'll do the council appointment the next. Um.
Meeting.
Day. And I believe we have four vacancies.
Correct.
And we have four applicants.
So there was uh, there was uh room for two business owners. Um and one, one resident from north and one from south uh Dunsmere.
Who are the other um contestants?
All right, so we have, so from south Dunsmere, I would uh Jennifer Ford. Jennifer here.
We'll start with Jennifer.
All right, and then um from north, we have Allison Lechuski, but uh he is not present.
I don't know.
Uh yeah, I'm not sure. She just was not able to make it back, uh but she will, she is. Very active. Yeah, then we had Jeannie, which you had already addressed, and then also uh. Uh Mr. Steve Pierce, who is a. Snowplow, snowplow flower group group that spoke about God. Extraordinary. He saved a lot of people's backs this winter and uh so those are our.
If you'd like to start us off.
Um. Oh, is it even on? I don't know. Would it do questions or whatever? Okay, um to be honest, I just had a sense that my name is Jennifer Ford and I I just have a sense of of duty because I'm. I was on the neighborhood watch and there was nobody that had applied at the time. I didn't know that. Um my favorite people here, the Pierces had applied, but um whatever. Uh so, yeah, I just it's a duty mainly. Um and I know there's, there's a lot of uh issues and I live right there on Dunsmere Avenue and I, you know, I I talk to all my neighbors and stuff like that, so. Um. I uh that's mainly why is just, I just did it out of the sense of duty mainly. I could tell you about my education or whatever. I don't know if you have any other questions, but um.
But I mean, if anything's relevant to the snow removal committee, feel free to.
You know, like you can run a tractor. No, I'm kidding. We appreciate your passion.
It was a bait and switch.
All right, well, then uh I'll open it up to questions from the councillors.
I I I know this person personally. I think she'd be a tremendous asset. She would have my vote.
Bruce. Pretty good on questions right now. So uh then we'll move on. Do we vote on them individually or we? We do. Okay, cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
Um.
Come on, dude.
Let's, yeah, Steve's.
All right. All right, Steve, since you're the other person in present this evening.
Good to be here. Finally, made it to this place. Uh. I'm a forty-seven-year resident of Dunsmere, fourth generation uh with my wife and kids here. Uh I've been moving snow for about, well, twelve years commercially, have contracts with Dollar General, Amtrak, many places in the community. And snow moving, I have found in our communities become adversarial um just because of. My lack of understanding of city policy and procedure. I don't know that we have anything on the books for independent contractors. But I'd like to see a change in the community to, for the merchants downtown to be taken care of before. Um people start hitting the streets. I'm, I go through at four in the morning moving snow and. I think I have a lot of input for snow removal after all the years that I've been doing it. I help many people in the community. I want to see. Um during the snow removal time, I know it it's tough. I'm out there. I get accused of being a city worker. Most of the time pulled over because of the yellow light. And uh I just tell them I'm I'm an independent contractor, but I understand what goes on when the. The snow flies in this community, uh the pressure that Dennis and everyone else is out there plowing and. I want to see just more of a peacefulness in our community during this time. And I think there's a an avenue that we can uh do this, working together and. I'm just grateful to be here and I want to help this uh city as best I can. So any questions?
No, we'd be honored to have your input. That's all I got to say.
Open up the questions.
Well, I I just say uh at this point that I know that I've gotten with Steve earlier several months ago about the idea of working things out. It seems to me the whole lot says that being being on this committee in the. Yeah, uh the rhythm has flowed that in forth, so.
Absolutely. I I I I want to make a point that he said he gets up at four o'clock in the morning. There are nurses and doctors that go to work because he allows it. Gets out and does this for him. So he would have my vote.
And Steve and I have also talked um once this winter um about that as well or about. I think it'd be valuable to have someone with this technical knowledge.
Absolutely. And I just want to say I was overwhelmed with people coming to me this year like never before. And all's I could say is, call Dustin. Because I couldn't help them, but I I want to do things right. I want to be on board, above board. And I want, there should be access, you know, there's so many things I'd like to say, but. You know, let's save it for the committee that we form and uh I'm looking forward to working with the city on this. So anybody else? Blake, you have anything for me? Dennis? Family and friends?
Thanks.
Okay, we'll open up the public comment.
All right. Oh, we're we're going to do public comment for everybody and then you're going to speak for Allison. Oh, I think we, I think you covered Jeannie pretty well.
Yeah.
I think. Adequately enough.
Let him speak for Allison.
Yeah, I'll speak for Allison, then I'll give my comment on everybody then, if you're okay with that. So um Allison did approach, uh did approach me and. And I thought it would be a good fit. She's very active in the community, mostly in the Parks and Rec area, but I thought uh. She she wanted to provide some input and I was like, well, you'd be a great person and a great applicant for that. And then she's spoken here many times and I think she's be a. A good fit. Um as far as all the applicants, I think I know everybody but uh Jennifer, so I'm Dustin. Um I I think uh this is a very good group. I'm excited to kind of work through the policy challenges we have. I'm trying to. Maintain our um snow removal at a high level here in a, in a mountain community and uh. And hopefully we can come out with a good policy by uh fall.
All right, I will open this up to public comment. Uh same rules as all the other public comments. If anyone would like to come up. Um.
My name's Alex and uh I think it's great that uh. More people have asked beyond there. I I don't know if there's a limit to how many people. That you can have on, but I think if you are wise, you would decide that you would allow them all to help if they're willing to volunteer.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on, anyone on Zoom? I don't know why I just did that. I'm closing, it's getting like, I'm closing public comment. Um.
Hey, that's what your posts is do.
Exactly.
So we can take them all for?
So we have all, we have four positions and four applicants. And unless anyone is opposed, I would be okay with you approving them all in bulk.
I make a motion that we approve them all.
Let let me, I'll list all the names and then you can use. Use that and the train horn as part of your, part of your motion. Um so that.
One thing I would like to point out, one of the things about these type of committees, I think this is a perfect example of this. There are members on the committee, but they're all public. So that means that anyone who wants an interest, even if you haven't been blessed by being appointed here, I invite you to take part of this. Because anyone, I know several people that weren't able to quite connect. It's open, it's public. This is not going to be just their business. It's going to be them gathering with other people. Thank you.
All right.
All right, so I will uh, there are uh, I believe as we uh formed the committee. There are uh two council positions that we will not be pointing tonight due to uh two absences. But there are um also four specified positions. Two of them are businesses, one for North Dunsmere, one for South Dunsmere. Um and I'll read them um and their location. Allison Lechuski for the North Dunsmere appointment.
I vote yes.
Oh, wait, wait. Jeannie Rogers as a business owner. Steve Pierce as a business owner and Jennifer Ford as a South Dunsmere resident.
Move all four.
I move that all four. Of these candidates be accepted to the committee.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion.
And we thank them for their fortitude and welcome to the party.
Thank you.
And then just as one quick question here, uh is there going to be staff representation on the committee as well?
Yeah, and I will, I will, that'll fluctuate in and out. Um I don't, although. I guess we didn't designate who specifically.
We can.
I will, I believe it'll probably be. Potentially four of us.
Okay.
I think you're supposed to bring in refreshments first, Steve.
She keep adding that melted snow?
Yeah.
Melted snow right here.
All right. And with that, we're going to loop back around to item number twelve, old business.
All right, oh, we're back to public works update. So uh today at uh four P M, we had a um. Information, informational public works site walkthrough um with council members and uh and a couple residents. Um and uh we, that was uh kind of one component of what we did. Um. Let's see, we are beginning, as I mentioned earlier, we're beginning uh a portion of our construction. Um which will be for the water main. So we currently have to move our water main because it's underneath the building site location. So we're going to move it to the parking lot. That will start Tuesday after Railroad Days is completed. And I'm trying to think what else. Everything else I focus on was budget, so that's um. But that is pretty much where we're at on the public works building and then the site plan, which we'll talk about on the next time.
Okay. Do we need any questions or anything along those lines?
Thank you for the field trip.
Yeah, for sure. Yes, thank you very much. Um, all right, then we'll move on to both the public work site plan. Oh, yeah, sorry. Is there any public comment on this item? I'm seeing none in the audience and none on Zoom. I will close public comment and we'll move on to discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that um if people aren't aware, um there's going to be a major new uh public works building. Put between the swimming pool and the community center. And uh there's been a lot of incredible work done by city manager and staff. We have a really cool plan for this. We took a tour today and the tour really kind of gave us a sense of how this would fit into the community. And I think this when it's all said and done will become a beautiful part of our community that was built and that's seen grown up. So I just want to let you all know that. Thank you.
All right, and with that, unless there's any other discussion, we'll move on to go the. Public Works Site Plan Approval.
Do you want to pull the plan up, Blake? There we go. All right. Ooh, that's close. All right, so we're working with pace engineering for, I don't know, a while to uh try and come up with a site plan that works. So if you're looking at the picture on the screen, on the right hand of the screen is uh Dunsmere Avenue. And so in the thought process of this, um the idea was to. How do we improve our parking situation uh for a number of in. One for capacity. So you can kind of see the angle parking stalls that are currently there in kind of the subdued colors. And then the new parking stalls and what it would look like um for the new parking lot. And so we have uh. We have the started basically from the street and we worked our way into the site, so it's. Um so the street, we did, um currently there's not an ADA sidewalk there and that sidewalk improvement, a portion of. The plan is not on there, but we will be improving the sidewalk all the way up to uh the ball field. Uh to make sure we're uh in ADA compliance. We'll be closing off the one entrance. And so there will no longer be a pass-through by the Park and Rex building. Um that will become closed and will add parking stalls on the street. Um and add additional parking stalls inside the parking lot. Um and. A portion of the thought process was to try and improve uh some of our traffic challenges and parking challenges over on the neighborhood side where the. Swimming pool entrance currently is. And so I've been working with the Park and Rex District to uh to kind of address some of that. Um and uh so the building overall will start after the parking lot. Um it is forty feet by one hundred. So the building overall will start after the parking lot. Um, it is forty feet by one hundred and fifty feet. The first thirty feet will have a twelve foot eve and the last one hundred and twenty feet will have a sixteen foot eve. Um, the front thirty feet will be. Um, uh, like a garage type shop space for Parks and Rec to work out of, and then also half of it will be, um. Office space, uh. Employee break room and restrooms. And then that will access to the, if you look at towards the bottom of the screen, there's no, doesn't show a door. But, uh, there will be access out to the area between the swimming pool and the building, which is approximately ten feet wide. And then, um, that will, uh. That will give us acts, give the swimming pools some additional space. Um, and give them access with a planned, um. Access point. Closer to the shower building, which would be to the right there. About to the, in that area with ADA ramps and, uh. Uh, some additional improvements there to, uh, to ensure that, uh. There's safe access, uh, for the swimming pool.
We run that, I think, the point you were making before about the idea of kind of stopping people from parking back.
Yes, and so the, the idea is to switch where they come in at and, uh. And we would look at moving that to the other side, so that way all the parking is available in the community center and in the new parking lot. Um, rather than in the neighborhood. Um, which can get quite congested. And so the building overall, so up here on the top, as you're, you're seeing there's be a grassy space, which is kind of currently there, but it's in need of some. Additional repair and stuff. Uh, we'll remove the old fence and all the tree, we're going to remove all of the trees. Um, from the street back about two hundred and some feet. Um, and that is to, uh. To accommodate for new pavement, we will have a, uh, electronic gate there, um, at the front of the yard. That yard, that, uh, gate and fence will match the actual, um. Train fence. And, uh, we will, um, we will continue that fence between the, there and the, the train and the community building. And, um. All of the utilities will be moved underground. You want to slide to the left, Blake? Uh, and then. Closer to the community building, there's a retaining wall. That retaining wall will stay. We'll use that as kind of our, uh, bunker space. For our commodity bins, um, and then, uh, all the rest of that will be just. Yard area with a large retaining wall at the end and then. To the bottom of the screen, scroll down. There'll be our access road that is going to be modified with another retaining wall on the back end of the building. So. We, uh. This will cause for the removal of approximately. Uh, three buildings and three structures and a shed. It's gonna, I don't know if it's temporary shed, but anyway, so there's four structures essentially that will be, uh, removed. Um, and, uh. There might be, have to be some tweaks in that front right area there. That's where ADA sidewalk, so the front end of that building is built up quite a ways. So as you can see, that sidewalk kind of zigs and zags. There's also some stuff we need to work out with, um. With Parks and Rec about, uh, a water feature there as well, which I think they have, but we will. That area is subject to some change once we get into design and some more information from. From, uh, Parks and Rec, but other than that, that's essentially what we're bringing forward as a building. Um, so I guess I'm, I'm looking for, um. A motion to, uh. To approve this site plan, which will then set me into the, um, design process of this, of the site, uh, for construction. And so we'll go into construction design. And then also, um. They, so I'm going to engage Pace to do the construction design specifically for the site plan and also do the bid documents. So what we're proposing is a pre-engineered. Uh, steel structure and that would all be bid as a part of the package that it would be pre-engineered. Um, and then, um, all the concrete and everything associated with that will be a part of that situation. That as well, and so this will just start the process for the design and the bids, bid documents, which I'll bring, I'll bring that proposal back. Um, for Pace Engineering at a future meeting so we can move forward into the bid process.
Public comment.
Yep, I'm opening this up for public comment.
Any hands?
Seeing none, I will.
What, what's this water feature? Is that a fountain? Is it, what's that?
No, that water feature is, it's, I think it's actually supposed to be to the left a little bit. Um, because you kind of see there's a little space right below there. That's the actual diving board. So that water feature is actually something the Parks and Rec District is working to add to the swimming pool. And so I think it's just kind of placed in the wrong space, so we just. I, I don't know specifically, I believe it's a slide, but that is, uh, that's a Park and Rec District thing. It's not part of our project.
Alright.
I'm making.
Seeing no further comment, I'm going to.
You've got the verbiage. Make a motion to approve the site plan?
I'll second. Alright, motion has been moved in second, all in favor?
Do we need a roll call on this?
No, there's.
No, this is just approving the site plan.
Motion carries unanimously. Alright, next we'll move on to twelve C, um, budget discussion and update. Do you mind if I? There's only three of us. Um, I'm moving that we table this till the next meeting, giving this.
A second.
Alright. Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, that takes us back to new business, item A sewer master plan, task order for grant application.
Alright, um, mayor and council, so, um, we had, uh. Previously went towards a, um. The sewer ad hoc committee, um, which we are still looking for an applicant for, so. We, somebody please apply for that. So as a part of that process, uh, it's a sewer master plan, so. There's a grant out there that's available. All we have to do is apply. Um, so the sewer master plan is something that we do approximately every twenty years. Our current sewer master plan is like two thousand six. Um, and by the time we get this adopted, it will be in probably two thousand five. The reason I, I wanted to move it forward was based on, um. We've completed a good, like. So much of that plan already, that there's not really much meat left in it and we're also. Um, coming down on a new permit for our wastewater treatment plant. And we also are, um, due to do, we, we're, we need to do, uh, sewer rate, uh, study. As a two eighteen process. And so we're kind of trying to gather all this into one, so we have a plan before we go and ask. Our residents to, you know, go through the two eighteen process and, and so as a part of this, um. Filling out the application and that component of it. In order to get us to where we get a bunch of free money to do the planning and all that stuff, it's a probably a quarter million dollar process. And for us to do it right. And, um. So this twenty five thousand dollars I'm requesting to, to, uh, to spend is essentially to get us to the, through the application. Once the application is submitted and accepted, then all expenditures after that are a part of the, the grant.
So the quarter of a billion, you're, you're talking about the improvements that may be necessary?
Yes, and so, um, as a part of that, we are looking at, you know, we look at things like, uh, our lift stations, um, our collection system, um. Aspects, uh, related to, um, anything, anybody who's still on septic. You know, and, and how we can take advantage of a lot of those different things, um, and so this, this master plan and. Will, will basically help with all that planning and what we need to do. I mean, we have, we have. We have a lift station that we need to spend quite a bit of money on. It's our primary lift station. You know, we're trying to look at alternatives. How do we limit our electricity usage? Just it covers the gamut, our hydraulics and everything related to our whole system and, uh, so that's what, uh. That's what we're trying to accomplish, um, in getting that done.
And I guess I just know there has been previous planning grants done in the past, so if you're in that realm. There was the water, there was two for the water, two for the sewer. A while back.
Yeah.
When you were first on council, yeah.
Yeah, and, and actually, the most recent, we did have, uh, we did receive in a seven million, seven point two million dollar grant. Which I think I probably forgot on my list today. Um, we did receive a seven point two million dollar grant that was based on a planning grant. That was part of, part of our initial. Sewer master plan, um, you know, to address, uh. I N I, which is, uh. Inundation and infiltration of our sewer system by stormwater. And so we did just receive that and so we will be hopefully going to construction next year on that too. And so it's, it's very important component.
Over the public, the idea is that on a regular basis, the government is increasing some of the requirements in order to be able to scare its guard air water. Into the river and so we're having to keep ahead of the game as best we can in spite of that.
Right, and, and so there are, and there is. Another planning grant that is in process currently for the wastewater treatment plant. And I'll be, be bringing a similar task order forward to make some amendments to that. Um, that would have, allow us to expand that grant. Um, and so. There, that. That will, you know, these two, they kind of work differently just because of it's different, different pots of money from the state that's complicated, but, uh. For this one specifically, um, I'm just looking to get the application in so we can start that process and move forward.
And our part on, on this is twenty five thousand and they matched that with two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, it's not really a match. It's, uh, I believe it, we'll probably get in the what, maybe half a million, right? Yeah. About a half million total. So. But a good portion of that is, is spent on the sewer master plan, but it's one, one planning grant, so we can do a lot of different aspects underneath that.
Okay.
Cool.
Alright, um, I will open this up to public comment. Alright, seeing none, I will close public comment and open it up to.
I would like to make a motion to approve the task order to complete the grant application.
I'll second that.
Oh, it's been moved in second.
Roll call.
Yeah, it's a roll call.
Council member Kaiser.
Aye.
Council member Deutsch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Klarino.
Aye.
And two absent.
Motion carries unanimously. Alright, we already did items number B and C and item D was combined with item number eleven and that moves us to fourteen future agenda items. Um. I'm gonna. Bruce, they, either of you have, uh, any future agenda items you'd like to add?
Not at this time.
I, I do actually have one I would like to add, um, to the next meeting and that's in the past, we have done a, um. Temporary fireworks, uh, restrictions in town every year. Um, I would like to actually go a little step further here and. I would like to put in place a, so we don't have to do it every year, just that way we don't miss. A permanent, um, fireworks restriction that runs from, um. April first. Through November first. Um, and then that way if someone still wants to light up some fireworks for. Uh, New Year's. Um, it doesn't cover the winter usually when there's less fire danger, but I think it's really important through spring, summer and fall, we have that.
One thing that I'm not sure are supporting this, I say this, but one thing to consider is that people that. Have brought up the idea that on the Fourth of July, we could find some place that would save a lot of concrete, things like that, people. Shoot out there, whatever, I'm not, again, I'm proposing that, but I think it's part of the policy.
I think that's definitely something that we can discuss during that item, um, and I'm proposing that we put that on the next meeting.
I, well.
So we need to.
I do, I'll, I do, I will make a comment on that because we are so close to the Fourth of July, so what I would propose. We would do for the next agenda would do the ban for the current year and then we will come back with, uh, something. More, yeah, because it, it requires an ordinance so that we have multiple reads, so we would actually miss the Fourth of July component.
Okay, is there any, yeah, okay, that's fine. So we'll, we'll put the ban on the next meeting and then propose and then. Talk about an ordinance, maybe, uh, in the, one of the following meetings.
I forgot something. Something was mentioned a while ago and I think it's an imperative. And. It's just some good stuff. But I think that this council. Should present. Kit and David from Castle Rock. Some kind of letter of appreciation for the things that they've done for this community. And worldwide. Um, that was discussed. I don't know what happened to it. And we need to discuss it again.
No, I will, I will bring that, I will, uh, I'll chat with Juliana. I, I agree, one hundred percent. I was.
You should get a gee, and we can be built with the best water on earth for.
It is, it's definitely something I had thought of. Um, she did text me and there was a delay, just some bureaucracy thing that they had to figure out, so there was a delay in the transition. And so. That didn't happen this cycle, but I want to get her back. Um, she did also say that, uh, from, from a field trip standpoint, we're going to do it, uh. I'm going to schedule something for the council and staff to be able to go out and, uh. And tour the facility.
Cool.
As the transitions happen.
I mean, they got it coming.
Nothing else for me.
Nothing else.
Sorry, on that note, um. I'll second that.
Do you want to hear a hallelujah?
All in favor, aye.
Let's give him a good hand. First time, good job, it's fair.
No, second time.